So y'all will see some buildings around town lit teal this month for awareness. Huntsville Hospital, Calhoun Community College, the Botanical Gardens, Northeast Alabama Community College, the City of Scottsboro, and AL.com building. So y'all be on the lookout for that. Thank you.
And our proclamation talks about the average year 22,000 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer and 14,000 die from the disease. And y'all through your support group have brought a great knowledge of this disease to the community. And I want to say thank you for the job you've done. And this is Ovarian Gynecological Cancer Awareness Month in Huntsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I want to give you this awareness pin.
All right. I wear my awareness pin. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is Lance Gilbert here from BizTech? Oh, Peter, you're in Lance's place.
Right.
Come up please, if you will. We are about to have Entrepreneur Week and Innovation and Entrepreneurship Week is August 24th through the 30th. And Peter Buescher here is in place of Lance Gilbert, who's in place of many others.
Bob Ludwig.
Bob Ludwig.
New granddad.
So he's a new granddad, but we wanted to, we have a resolution here for Innovation and Entrepreneurship Week, August 24th through 29th, and we're naming it that here in the city of Huntsville. Like to give you that. And really like to say that entrepreneurship and innovation is what drives our economy and makes us a prosperous place to be. And it's built industry here. We've had three Fortune 500 companies that have come out of somebody's basement and will probably have more than that in the future. And I want to say I appreciate what y'all do to encourage entrepreneurship and innovation here. And please tell us about it.
Well, it's exciting. BizTech has been in business of supporting entrepreneurial enterprise here in Huntsville for close to 20 years. And I'm proud to say that just in the last six months of the year, Lance and Bob Ludwig have really reached out to the community and are working with a host of different agencies, Rocket Hatch, Brandon Cruz. And we've really brought a spirit of entrepreneurship back that maybe it lagged a little bit. One of the things that we got some advice from some outside groups, and Lance is reaching down now into the 4th and 5th grade across the city of Huntsville. And the response he's getting from young kids, young school kids, about starting their own business. Brandon Cruz could buy and sell me about a couple thousand times, and I think he started his business when he was in the 9th or 10th grade. So we're really about creating and maintaining an exciting opportunity for entrepreneurial enterprise to flourish in Huntsville, to create jobs.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the job that y'all do. And Steve Iveyar, Director of Parks and Recreation. Steve, would you come up, please? Steve, we have someone we want to recognize tonight. And she was coming in on a plane at the very end of the day, and we weren't sure if she was going to actually get here. Mary Jones. There you are. Come up, please. And Mary, we want to say congratulations. Mary just came back. She won a gold medal at the 2015 Pan Am Games and is hopeless to make the USA rowing team in the 2016 Olympics. So congratulations to you. And Steve, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
You've got the resolution there.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't do the resolution, and your mother talked to me, and I can't say, we can't say how proud we are of you and your accomplishments in the Huntsville Rowing Club. I know they're going to honor you tomorrow night at barbecue, and we're just glad to have you back in Huntsville.
Thank you so much.
Welcome back to Huntsville. And we have a resolution here signed by the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Huntsville for you. And I guess we probably need to pass this very quickly, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
We have a resolution commending Mary Jones as a gold medal winner for Team USA at the 2015 Pan Am Games. Mr. Kling has made the motion, share seconds at discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It carries.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mary. And finally, Mr. President, council members, in front of you tonight, you have a budget. Budget that came from the city of Huntsville and more specifically came from Randy Taylor, who is our finance director. And I told Randy I wasn't going to do anything special for him tonight, and I lied. Randy, if you would please come forward. I think your wife is here. Would you bring her too? Over my last seven years with Randy, Randy has been our finance director. Please, both of you come forward. Randy's been our finance director, and we have put out these little booklets here. Come on up, come on up. I knew that you didn't want to come. But Randy has been here with me past seven years and really given great guidance, given great guidance for the city of Huntsville and for myself, for council members on many a time. He has many affectionate nicknames such as Dr. No and some other things. But he is, you know, he's the architect. He's the person that we've gotten the standard and pores and moody's triple A ratings. And if you look at them, that's one of them, that's two of them, three of them, four of them, five of them, six of them, seven of them, and eight. And what that means is for eight, the last seven years, every bond issue that we put out has had the triple A rating, which is the highest rating that any municipality can have. And it's because of the financial management that Randy has provided for us. Randy is moving on to greener pastures. We are going to miss him and miss him a lot. It's going to take two people to replace what one person did. But I do have a, I have a couple of things for him. Randy, we have a proclamation from the city of Huntsville in honor of 17 years of service to the city of Huntsville. The past seven years of eight triple A ratings that have come through this, we gave Chief September 1st, because he was retiring September 1st. We gave Mr. Hatfield September 2nd, because he was retiring September 1st also. The next day is September 3rd, and on September 3rd, it will be Randy Taylor Day in the city of Huntsville. And we want to say thank you for some great work that you've done. Shake everybody's hand. We still have one other thing.
We're going to have a budget work session back there.
Yeah. Very good. We also have you a plaque. Most of the time, we don't do plaques unless you make 20, 25, 30 years. But because of the service that you've done for me the past seven years, for the 17 years in the city of Huntsville, we have a Randall E. Taylor plaque and an award of appreciation. It has this pin on it with 17 years that says, "Thank you for 17 great years. Thank you for the past seven years." We, you know, a lot of people can be a finance director, and a lot of people can count the numbers and everything, but very few people can be a financial manager. And being able to manage money and see what the future holds and talk about where the future goes and where our trends are going and making sure that this city works right and that we work properly. And one of the things that Randy did during the 2008 and 2009 time when we went through our recession, we didn't have to lay anybody off. And very few cities went through and didn't lay people off. And we didn't have to lay anybody off because Randy had set us up as conservative as possible and made us work along some very hard lines to make sure that we made our budgets meet our revenues and that we could keep everybody working in the city of Huntsville. And that's something I think that we all owe him a big round of applause for, because we didn't lay people off during the biggest recession that this country's ever seen. We made sure that everybody still had a job and everybody was taken care of. So Randy, thank you for what you've done for the past 17 years. I have a coin from the city also, and I told you I wasn't going to do anything for you, but this isn't a lot for somebody who got us eight triple A ratings. Thank you very much. And he'll be back up in a minute talking about budget. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Councilmembers, we have a resolution congratulating Chief Louis Morris on his retirement from the Huntsville Police Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It carries. Mr. Kling.
Mr. President, I don't know. We were trying to get Chief Morris to attend. Did he, he is here. Gone but not forgotten. If I could borrow the... Mr. President, while he's coming up, let me just tell you a few of the achievements that took place with Chief Morris's career. And I've been proud to have known him all these years I've been on the council. He began working with the police department in 1976, and that was before I even graduated from college, which gives you an idea of how long ago that is. He came on as a patrol officer, and he worked his way through the ranks, holding positions such as police investigator, police sergeant, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief of police. And Mayor Battle, in his infinite wisdom, appointed him to serve as chief of police in 2012. He had many great achievements that took place during his years. I guess on a personal basis, let me just say that working with him, especially when we had the new precinct system set up, I was lucky because I got Chief Morris over at the West Police Precinct. And what he had meant to the low mill holiday homes area of the city, it was such a great shot in the arm. In fact, while there were some little adjustments in some other parts of the city getting used to their respective precincts, Chief Morris came in and all the time ladies were coming from the neighborhoods, bringing in cookies and goodies and everything. And I used to jokingly kid him about him gaining weight and about me dropping by more than I normally would just because of all the goodies that were brought in by residents of the neighborhood. But in a nutshell, the community relations that he had as the precinct captain and the community relations that he instilled as chief of police throughout the city, I think, are just really great. We look at the guys in wearing blue in this room, and they put their necks on the line. It's a tough business. I know it's not always the most popular things, and sometimes the media just seems to take hotshots at y'all. But the acceptance, the support here in the community of Huntsville for the police chief, for the police chief and for the police department, I think is very, very strong, especially compared to what we see in other communities. And the reason there is such that buy-in between the community, the neighborhoods, and the police department, I think largely rests with the great job that Chief Morris did. So Chief, it's my privilege to present this to you and to shake your hand one last time and just personally and as a council member, just tell you thank you for what you have done for this community. You've just been super great. And thank you. Appreciate it. You need to get the last one, didn't you?
Well, I did. I had a long career. I had a very enjoyable career. I appreciate the support and the opportunity to finish my career as chief. And all the accomplishments that we achieved during my tenure weren't because of me, they're because of the employees at the police department. And they're the ones that deserve the credit. And Chief'd get a round of applause. But thank y'all for recognizing.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. This time, I'm going to ask Mayor Battle to present his fiscal year 2016 proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll ask Mr. Taylor come back up. He might have left with his wife after getting the standing, but we still got a little bit of work to do. Council in front of you, you've got your 2016 budget. The 2016 budget has $192 million in operating funds. This represents $4 million or 2% more, an increase over the 2015 operating budget. It projects a 3% increase in sales tax revenues, which will largely be absorbed by employee costs and mandatory increases in operating costs. It is a lean budget, and while being a lean budget, it does have modest increases in funding for some departments. And it does include a 1% COLA, Cost of Living Allowance Raise for all employees, for all city employees. You know, this is, to you as council members, this is really more the same. We end up with a budget that comes out every year. We have a little bit more money to be spent. Most of it is already spent before we get here, because it's some of our employee costs. It comes in healthcare costs, it comes in retirement costs, it comes in making sure that we provide one of the best healthcare systems that we can through our daily maintenance. But it also comes in the payroll that we do, because that is a lot of what we have in our budget. And we are one of the few cities that can provide a payroll package for each of our employees, where we provide 13%, 14% of the revenue for retirement. Employees provide about 6%. We provide a very, very rich plan in making sure that our employees have proper medical care and insurance. And that is something that we feel like we are obliged to do. This week, we have met with some of the firefighter officials and talked to them about the retirement plan, what the state's trying to do with our retirement plan. And we plan on working with them to make sure that each one of our city employees is taken care of and that we don't move towards some of the moves that Montgomery's trying to do, so that they do not pay the fair share and they put the burden back on our employees. Because that's something important. We are only as good as our employees. And we, as a community, will make sure that we have good employees, that we have, and we keep working with them and work with them through everything. The highlights of this year's budget, $4.3 million for road surfacing. We are funding three new police officers in this budget. We funded six more in the last budget. So we've added nine in the last two years. $37.9 million in road construction as part of a Restore Our Roads. $3.5 million in parks and recreation, quality of life projects. $1.8 million in fleet purchases. $21 million for the Huntsville City Schools, and this is to make our school system one of the finest in the state of Alabama, make us competitive on a national basis. $12.3 million for outside agencies. One thing you will not see in the budget is body cams. We have all committed that we are going to do body cams, and we are going to work through that process of doing the body cams. That will come out of year-end funds. And I hope no one thinks that we have forgotten our promise, that we promised to the community. The community wanted body cams, everybody up here wanted body cams. All the, everybody was in agreement on that, and that will come about out of year-end funding. And I will turn it over to Mr. Taylor now. And Randy, welcome to the mic one more time, and I think we might have him here a couple more times. But thank you for coming up and putting together this budget, which is always a chore to do because it always happens at the very, it takes a little while to pull it all together.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, as the mayor has already more than adequately outlined, and I'll just add a little bit of detail and some other things for you to consider as you evaluate his proposal. The first thing I want to review with you or just go over your package, what you have in front of you is a very brief snapshot of the most significant things that his proposal represents. He's already talked about those things. And then you have the introduced budget ordinance tonight. It's a lengthy document. And you also have the two introduced capital improvement plans, the 1990 plan and the 2014 plan. What is not introduced tonight but does travel with his budget, and that'll be available to the council members at the next meeting. It'll require unanimous consent, but that'll be the 1% Cost of Living Increase Ordinance that will be part of this at the next meeting, which is included in his proposal, as he's already said. So as the mayor's already talked about, we've got considerable pressure still exists in our operating budgets. And I have to, for the last time, remind you why that's the case and why it will continue to be something that's important for you to keep thinking about as you go forward and what the consequences of that have been. And this is not intended to be negative, but just for you to be realistic about what the city's financial position is and how we should think about additional revenues when they become available. The vast majority of our expenses go to our number one most important resource, people. We've been able to maintain our level of staffing and the level of public services even through difficult times several years ago. Not all municipalities and counties have been able to do that, nor state governments. So that comes with a cost, and that cost is in the budget. We have step raises, we have cost of living increases, we have healthcare. Those things use up most of our budget growth every year, because as I've explained to you numerous times, those things have grown faster as a percentage than our sales tax revenue has grown. And that's our most significant source of revenue and grows the most. So during the recession, you know our revenues went down, and so we have experienced what the school systems would call proration. Prorations are permanent. When your revenues go down and then you have a rebound, they don't go back to where they were before the recession. The money that's lost is lost forever. So we did reset the base. We started to grow again. Our budgets are certainly larger than they were during the post-recession years. But it took several years before we actually surpassed what they were before. But our costs continued to rise through that whole period, particularly personnel. So when the mayor proposed to you a first significant restructuring in 2011, we eliminated $27 million of cost. You had to cut that much in the budget. That was all pushed to the sideline. Most of it was capital, most of it was fleet. We have not bought a police car, we've not bought a fire truck, we've not bought a pickup truck or a garbage truck in the operating budget for the departments since 2007. That money has, we've been using carryover funds, we've been paying for on the capital budgets, which now has some amount of funding for that. That's very important for you to remember. It was put on the bench, sat on the sidelines, and has not gotten back in the game, so to speak. Capital Plan has borne the brunt of the increase of the cuts, excuse me, in the document that you have before you and including this fiscal year that we're about to close, there's $119 million that is being transferred from the Capital Plan to the General Fund over a 10-year period, projected. $7.4 million in the budget the mayor has proposed. And we've all acknowledged that that's the reality of the revenue decline, and so that has resulted in a significant impact on the quality of life projects, other infrastructure projects that are just as important to the city as the operating activities. So keep those things in mind. They've not gone away. There's still lots of money that has been eliminated from the budget that's not people, for the most part. It is some operating costs, but it's largely the things that our departments and the employees depend on every day to be able to do their jobs. And that's been set aside, as well as infrastructure demands that our citizens expect and that will continue to keep Huntsville vibrant and growing. So that's a dynamic that's part of our budget. The budgets will always be tight. Personnel costs are rising and using most of the $4 million in new revenue. We're glad that we've seen a 3% revenue increase so far in sales tax. We're projecting the same. What next year's proposal is from the mayor is essentially what we thought it might be a year ago. We've had a reasonable year. The numbers have stayed pretty close to budget, as we've reported to you already. And we've had some overages, we've had some shortages, but overall, we think we're going to be okay. So that is translating into a budget for next year that looks pretty much like we thought it would be. So there's not a lot of significant changes. But that $4 million of additional revenue represents a conservative 2% increase overall, 3% growth in sales tax. We think that's a reasonable figure based on everything that's happening in our local economy right now. There is a 1% Cost of Living increase that the mayor's proposed that will cost the General Fund about $1.2 million of that $4 million. Healthcare is increasing 9.6% in next year's budget. That's a $1.9 million increase. That's the largest increase we've seen in at least six years. It's actually up this year 13%. And so we had some cushion in the budget that's insulating us a bit this year, but that means that we've still got to adjust next year's budget. And that is the, you know, we're self-insured. So every medical care cost that our employees incur, we pay the bill. And so this year has been a difficult year for that. And that will command an additional $2 million of that $4 million. And then we have step raises. We've had some decreases. Fortunately, fuel is down, and we are using $1 million of savings in next year's budget. That's helped us fund the significant needs that the departments have requested for operating purposes. Utilities is going up, repairs to our fleet, the repairs to our facilities, and other capital needs that the departments have. We've tried to accommodate, we've not accommodated everything, but we've used some of that fuel savings to help us do those things that have been really strained for a long time. So, and there, mayor's already mentioned, our three new positions, our new police officers, that is included in next year's budget as well. The capital budgets have a variety of changes. We'll be talking about those in detail in another session or with you as council members in whatever the right setting is. We've got two capital plans, and we have to make changes every year based on changes in plans, changes in revenue. So you have those as well to look at all the projects that are included. I think that's all that I wanted to present, Mayor. I'll be glad to answer a question if there are any. If not, then we'll wait for another setting council to do that.
Councilmembers, do you have questions for Mr. Taylor?
Randy, can you give any correlation to why we're having such a great increase in health insurance when I think one of the reasons of going with the city clinic was it was supposed to be a cost savings?
I'd have to defer to Byron and his staff and HR, but it is true, and you've had a presentation already on the clinic and where we are, we did expect that we would see savings. Now, we're just about to finish our first full year. We're not quite there yet, so it takes a while for us to get traction in that regard. So we are definitely saving money. Just because our numbers are up doesn't mean we're not saving money. It means that they're not as high as they possibly could be if we weren't doing that. But I have to add, which is my strongest conviction about what you're doing with an employee clinic, is it's not the immediate cost you're going to see. You're doing something that's going to benefit the lives of employees and therefore the cost to the city long after we're not here. And that's what we need to, however we manage healthcare, we need to think about the long-term costs for people who particularly need to have situations, health situations identified now, and the city can help them intervene, provide them the treatments they need so that they don't have catastrophic health events and costs 20, 30 years from now. So the clinic is certainly having success in that regard.
Mr. Kling, I might point out, when we first went into the clinic, we knew probably that the first year would be a little bit more expensive, that it would cost us some money first year, mainly because people were now getting doctor's care that never had doctor's cares before. And as having that care, they got on medications that they should be on, they got on this and that. So we had a lot more employees who actually got doctor's care and got physician's care through that. By doing that, long-term, we may be able to avoid some of these diseases, which are so expensive and so costly, and we may be able to have a more productive and more productive employee. So that's one of the reasons that we went to the health clinic. At the end of the first year, we're going to compare our numbers against Huntsville Utilities' numbers, who is using another healthcare provider than ours, and we're going to kind of look person to person and see what the cost is for theirs versus the cost of ours and see if, see where we land on it. You know, I think it's a good way that we can compare apples to apples and see what our, if our costs are in line with where they should be.
Mr. President, one more question, please?
Sure, Mr. Kling, go ahead.
Randy, I think Mayor Battle kind of touched on it, but what percent of our employees' retirement pensions do we have funding included for? We're not 100%, are we? Are we like 90-something or something?
What percentage of funding do we have for our retirement plan overall?
Yep.
The city is 63% funded for its long-term cost of retirement care. Of course, that is managed, you have to understand, it's a very complicated economic thing, and it's managed by the state retirement system, RSA. And we do pay 100% of what we're required to pay every year. There have been cost increases. It's related to the investment performance of RSA. But most of it has to do with costs and the number of people that are retired from the city. So Cost of Living increases for retirees have affected it over the years, as well as the drop program and things like that. But our, it is important, Councilman Kling, and the budget, to know the significance of retirement. When I started here, our contribution to match the employees was 4% of city payroll cost. It's 14% right now, so it's continued to rise. And so you spend about $14, $15 million on retirement in the city's operating budget, and that's almost as much as healthcare. So it's a very significant factor. We've seen some improvement. Our funding improved just a little bit over the last year per RSA's figures. So we do pay what we're required to pay, but we have, we have not covered our long- So we do pay what we're required to pay, but we have, we have not covered our long-term costs.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor, I have a question. You mentioned $119 million we transfer the capital budget to the operating budget over 10 years?
Yes, sir.
And 7.4 is proposed in this budget. What projects are being removed, do you know?
It's so many, Councilman Russell, it's hard to say. And some of that, of course, we did this restructuring in 2011 and then in 2015 budget. A lot of changes were made, and so that resulted in really a holistic change to a lot. And some of them were over that three-year period of time as we continued to adjust. Now, the later years, which represents, you know, 30 to 40 million dollars that's just now coming into the capital plan, those weren't in the window of consideration when we made the cut. So what we've lost is the ability to add projects that equate to maybe a third of that. But it's been a variety, and Shane Davis, John Hamilton will have to talk to you about the things we've had funded before, and we've either deferred them or just removed them.
Mr. Davis, we don't need to go into great detail, but if you could touch on that, please?
Councilmembers, the projects that were lost in the capital plan really came two budget cycles and three budget cycles previously. As we've came to you year over year, you know, we've cut the capital plan to subsidize the general fund. This current budget year, needing to do a little bit of that for the proposed 2016 budget, we've not canceled any projects, we've just deferred those and pushed those out. So the projects are still in the plan, they're just not at accelerated pace we'd like to see.
Councilmembers, I ask that you keep that in, you keep that in mind as we go through the budget process. Over the years, we have really changed the capital budget to booster up the operating budget, and one day, we're going to pay the piper for that. Dr. Showers?
Mr. Taylor, I know we went to a new format in financing from that department. I note in this 2016 budget, you don't show the FY 2015 as we have had it in the past. Is there any reason why that's not being shown in this particular format?
That's a good question, councilmembers. I neglected to tell you, we will, I will provide you in the next few days the details that accompanies this. What you have is the ordinance only, and the ordinance would only show this year. But I do owe you the package so you can see the comparison between this year and last year. It will show you the budget, it will show you where we think we'll land this year and what next year's budget is, and so you can see the changes in all the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You want to tell them a little bit about the format as the format changes in there?
Sure. The Councilman Showers and the mayor are talking about the significant changes that are coming our way with our new financial reporting system. That takes place on October the first. So you may recall, you funded it, of course, and we're very glad about that. It's going to bring the finance department out of the 19th century and into the 21st century, and all of our departments are going to have much better tools to do their jobs in managing their budgets. So, but what it's done is it's broken up the city into so many, lots of different pieces. Right now, we've identified 44 different earmarks on the revenues that come into the city. Some of that is from the state, some of that's federal sources, some of those are council sources, money that we pledged to the school system or the capital plan. So we are isolating all those earmark revenues so we can fully understand this money is to be used only for this, rather than aggregating it and serving to confuse us sometimes. So you'll see a different budget, your ordinance is lengthy, and you can see all those different pots of money, if you will, that we're asking you to approve the budget for. But just know it's going to be different. The numbers are the same, we're just allocating them differently so that everybody better understands how we have to use the money that have strings attached. So, but the financial system itself will be very powerful, and Ken Benyon, our acting finance director, and the finance department staff, the clerk treasurer, and even the departments will have considerably more powerful tools to help manage the city. But we'll give you the details that you need, Mr. Showers.
Councilmembers, as we move forward, we'll probably have a work session next week, and we'll try to get with everybody's schedule, but prepare, be thinking about Thursday, and if Thursday doesn't work, then we'll find an alternative date and time.
And if any council members need to sit down with us individually, we will be glad to sit down with you individually and go through whatever portion of the budget. Get Mr. Davis, Mr. Hamilton, and Mr. Benyon together and go through, go through the budget with you, and then if we can also do it at a work session, that would work fine.
Councilmembers, any other questions about the budget before we move on?
We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 15-477 zoning newly annexed property lying east of US Highway 431 South and on the west side of Goose Ridge Drive to Residence 1A District. This was set July 9, 2015 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is newly annexed property. It's approximately 2.74 acres. It's located east of US Highway 431 South and on the west side of Goose Ridge Drive. This property is a part of the existing Meadows at Hampton Ridge, excuse me, Meadows at Hampton subdivision, and this property will be an addition of that current phase that is currently being developed. The proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence 1A District, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address accounts on this particular issue? Ms. Tremblake, if you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Ralph Timberlake, 2117, Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810.
Welcome.
I rise to seek information and possible opposition to this particular zoning. The information I request is to know what impact would this have on the city's budget and ability to render equitable service to these new residents as well as the current resident? And how would this affect the current issue brought before the council dealing with pay as we overwork our city employees? This kind of expansion causes some type of deleterious effect, and I think that needs to be spelled out, and I did not hear it, and if you would be so gracious as to share with me what those would be. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hamilton, could you answer Mr. Timberlake's question, please?
I can. So the process that we have inside the city, when a property owner requests that their property be annexed, it's reviewed by all of the departments that deliver services to those properties. They do analysis to make sure that they can deliver the service at the same level they're currently delivering it. In this particular case, it's, we only bring it to you because they have recommended approval, and the planning commission has recommended approval, and we do have the resources within the current construct of the city in terms of personnel, equipment, the budget necessary to add this property into our city.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 15-479 amending Article 50 Research Park District Regulation Section 50.1 Uses Permitted. Article 51 Research Park West District Regulation Section 51.1 Uses Permitted. Article 52 Research Park Applications District Regulation Section 52.1 Uses Permitted. Article 54 Research Park Applications II District Regulation Section 54.1 Uses Permitted. And Article 73 Supplementary Regulations Amending Regulations Concerning Mobile Food Vending Units. This was set July 19, 2015 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This proposed zoning ordinance is to add mobile food vending regulations for our research park, Research Park West, Research Park Applications, and Applications II District. When the mobile vending ordinance was created in 2013, the Research Park Board asked planning staff if we would omit the Research Park District so that they would have a little bit more time to evaluate the mobile food vending regulations, as well as how they would tie in with several of the businesses and vendors in the Research Park area. They have requested this year that we include them, and we would like to include these for particular districts. The regulations will still remain the same as shown on the screen. There are separate days and times as far as hours of operation for the Research Park districts. The hours proposed are Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and those can be adjusted at a later time. We have had some requests for morning hours, earlier morning breakfast hours, as well as some dinner hours, but planning staff would like to start out with the more popular demand of lunch and expand in the future if necessary.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jackie Reed, 1000A. Bob Wallace. I have some questions, and I did also at the planning department. What's uses permitted? Can anybody and everything go out there with a license and do what they want to?
Ma'am, is that your only question?
No, it's not.
Okay.
The other one is, the other one is the food trucks. I work in a restaurant, and these food trucks are really hurting the restaurant businesses in this city. My question is, I'd like for someone to show me the license of the people of the trucks operating the trucks, when the health department has inspected those trucks, and how much taxes you've taken in on those trucks since you've okayed the trucks to go through the city. Now they want to put breakfasts in, but having worked in a restaurant and seeing what you all are doing with the food trucks. Now, maybe I'm not against it, but you say big cities are doing it, and that's why you want to do it. Move there. Anyway, I want to find out, and I want some, to know how much taxes, and are they paying taxes? And the food trucks are really honestly hurting the restaurant businesses. Now, you all can believe that or not, but I can walk you around town and show you the night you got the food trucks downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols, Ms. Reed's questions are, what is uses permitted, and then do food trucks, are they licensed like any other restaurant? Please go ahead.
Ms. Reed, the only uses we are adding with this proposed ordinance are the mobile food vending units, which are commonly known as your food trucks, and also mobile food vending sites. If the Research, Cummings Research Park Board decided they wanted to add a Research Park food truck area in the future, this would permit them to do this, as well as if the, let's say, Raytheon, if they wanted to have a mobile food truck come and vend, they would basically comply with these regulations, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They would also have to provide the food truck owner with a written lease or a written permission, giving them permission to vend on this property, along with the fact that they have to have a health department license, as well as a actual City of Huntsville business license showing each address where they are permitted to vend.
And I might add, we've had the same concern, and we've looked at what the food truck business has done in the downtown area. When they first got started, we were worried about taking away from people who were paid for brick and mortars down in the downtown area. And after they first came down and 5,000 people showed up and five food trucks were there, and they couldn't feed everybody, and everybody left those food trucks to go eat downtown and around the other places, all the downtown owners were asking for food trucks to come down, because it gave them enough capacity, and they could take care of their customers, and more people were down there, and there were more people to be served. So I will say that we do check very closely with the owners, because we've been very cautious as we've moved this ordinance through, but it does serve as a benefit to bring more people to the areas where the food trucks are. And quite frankly, most people don't stand in the line and wait for the food trucks. They go off and eat at a restaurant that's close by, and that restaurant is one that benefits off of it.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion?
Question, Mr. President.
Ms. Kling.
Ms. Nichols, I didn't quite understand, did this come from the Research Park Board, or is this something that's being done as an option for the Research Park Board if they want to?
This is being done as an option with anything that planning staff would like to add to the Research Park area. We do present it to the Research Park Board first to get their approval or work out any kinks. Initially, with the mobile food vending, there was an issue as far as the restroom requirement with security in certain businesses. Basically, this gives businesses the option to have it or not have it, particularly in a multi-tenant building where one business operation may have a different security requirement versus another. It's just merely another food establishment option.
Mr. President, if I could, if I could add, I, myself, and as representative from council on the, Mr. Culver also serves on the Research Park Board, we've only brought this because the Research Park Board recommended approval. In fact, planning came to the board multiple times with presentations. The board asked for some changes, and those changes were applied, and that's what's here. So it's only, it only came through the process to you because the board had recommended approval of this version.
Further discussion? Ms. Kling?
No, I was going to just, I could give your responses on that.
Sure. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 15-481 amending Article 53 Research Park Commercial District Regulation Section 53.5 Parking and Loading Areas, amending regulations concerning retail parking. This was set July 9, 2015 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This proposed zoning ordinance is to amend the current retail parking regulations for our Research Park District. This district is commonly found in the Bridge Street area. Currently, for retail sales and service establishments, the parking requirement is one space for each 200 square feet of gross area. Planning staff would like to propose that this ordinance be amendment, excuse me, be amended to read one space for each 300 square feet of gross area. The Bridge Street staff did a planning study as far as parking during their peak hours and peak days of the year, such as Black Friday, and they realized that they did have an excess of parking. Also, each retailer there has a different parking requirement, and this was causing some conflict. So this change in the parking ordinance will help temporarily alleviate some parking stress that they have, and it is something that planning staff will work with Bridge Street and other Research Park districts in the future to assist with any parking concerns they may have.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. How does that, I'm assuming this is only applicable to Bridge Street, is that right?
Yes, that's currently our only area in town that is zoned Research Park Commercial. And for each use that's located there, they all have a different parking requirement, with, of course, resale sales being the largest parking requirement.
Let me ask you this, can an individual business owner make a request to have the square footage increase per however many people? I mean, in essence, can a business get more people? I know this is not the same as commercial, but for example, a club, is, can they make a request to have the ordinance amended to reflect more guests with less parking spaces?
They can make a request, and planning staff can look into that issue and see if there is a problem as far as parking citywide, but if there is no, no issue or no excess in parking, more than likely, planning staff would not recommend a change in the parking ordinance. With this particular ordinance, there is an excess of 1,000-plus spaces on your main peak holiday being Black Friday, and it was basically taking away additional spaces that other businesses could use, and also other proposed businesses that are planning to relocate to Bridge Street in the near future.
Okay, okay. Thank you, so kind of.
Further discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for suspension of licensure of certain taxpayers. Mr. Taylor?
Councilmembers, I'd like to explain this item and the next one, since they're very similar public hearings. As we've described for you before, compliance with our tax laws is important, and the finance department has to enforce that. We have a requirement to file and a requirement to pay your taxes, and those are two independent requirements. And so when taxpayers have developed a pattern of not complying with those things, whether it be an agreement we've had with them to make their payments over time, we have always accommodated that to assist taxpayers. But if it's that or just other, more long-term compliance issues, then we will come to you and ask that their license be suspended. In that suspension, we cannot enforce that as long as the taxpayer complies with whatever the requirements are that they're behind with. So in this case, this particular public hearing is for a group of taxpayers, there's five, and the next one is one taxpayer. So all of them have been contacted, all of them understand what we expect them to do, they understand that the city won't do anything as long as they follow through with their, what we expect. So anyway, that's what- So, um, anyway, that, that's what we have, and, uh, ask that you consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? Mr. Timbly Lake, state your name and address for the record, please.
Ralph Timbly Lake, twenty-one seventeen, Akron Drive. I, I respectfully request that, uh, that you elucidate more on what is being done. I mean, it seemed to be that you're absconding from giving detailed information that a prudent person could rely on to understand what's going on. I, I, I don't understand anything that being done on my behalf as a taxpayer in this city from what the, uh, public servant is just, could you ask them to give a little bit more information?
Sure.
Thank you.
They've reached an agreement with the taxpayer to make tax payments? And if they don't make their tax payments, punishment will, they'll receive punishment? Is that correct, Ms. Taylor?
In the past, uh, Mr. Taylor, we've listed, uh, those businesses that were derelict. I notice in this particular draft, uh, four or five, we don't list the names of those individuals that's losing the opportunity to continue to serve.
Councilman showers, we did, uh, often provide the name of the taxpayer. Given increasing sensitivity to the confidential, confidentiality laws that the state imposes on us and our own ordinances, we do not provide those in the public documents, but we have provided you that information under seal. I can give you a copy of that, uh, here at the meeting, if you would like me to do that. Uh, but we, we will provide that separately to each council member.
That suffice.
Mr. Joffran, could you advise the council on that, please?
Well, Mr. Taylor is absolutely correct. The state law has become, uh, much more strict about the release of information regarding individual taxpayer entities, and does, uh, preserve the confidentiality of that information. So it is, is not to be shared. Uh, there could be penalties, uh, imposed against, um, the City of Huntsville or individuals who do release that information, uh, inappropriately. So, uh, Mr. Taylor is absolutely correct.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Shower. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for suspension of licensure of a certain taxpayer. This was set August thirteenth at the two thousand fifteen regular council meeting. Uh, Mr. Taylor's already explained this. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Mr. Timbly Lake, please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Timbly Lake, twenty-one seventeen, Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight one zero. I am bemused by the fact that there is a name on this particular tax delinquent individual. However, there was some, uh, someone seemed to be, uh, trying to hide as if there was some breach of confidentiality on the other one. I think that the delineation between what is confidential and what is not confidential, the public has a right to know what is being held out as confidential and what is not. That was not provided, and the last one, I trust that someone can explain the difference between the two on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joffran, could you try? Or, Ms. Taylor, okay?
Council members, I'm looking at the agenda, and I'm looking at both of the actions in front of you, and there's no names, uh, on any of them.
Yeah, it reads exactly the same to me, but, um...
Mr. President? Uh, Ms. Taylor, I guess, uh, let me ask you. I understand what you just said a few minutes ago, and would it be helpful for Mr. Timberlake to know that if it were something that the city could release on its public document, we would do so, but we're being prohibited by the state? Is that a nutshell of what we're trying to do?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we would do it if we could, but the state says if we do, we're in violation of state law.
Right, and we have not in either case tonight.
Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Kling, uh, Dr. Robinson, second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for Tukessa Jefferson and Brian Ball doing business as Party Life LLC. This was set August thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at the regular council meeting. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, this is, um, application for a special shuttle license. This company wants to operate one vehicle, fifteen-passenger bus, which will be used for parties, weddings, um, graduations, that sort of thing. Uh, paperwork's in order, background checks have been done.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? The public hearing is now closed. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Doc Shower. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for Cecilio Kentage Jr. and Tiffany Kentage doing business as KTI Express Courier. This was set August thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at the regular council meeting. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, this is an application for, uh, uh, luxury vehicle license. This company is also new, wants to operate one luxury vehicle. Paperwork's in order, and background checks are, are fine.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc Shower. Mr. Culver, did you second that? Mr. Culver, second it. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for Charlie Pat Reynolds doing business as Trans Care. This was set August thirteenth, two thousand fifteenth, the regular council meeting. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, this is an existing business that, uh, comes under the new ordinance that was passed by the council several months ago. He's already in operation. Um, this action tonight will bring him into compliance with that new ordinance. It's one wheelchair accessible vehicle. Um, his application is also in order, background checks have been done, and, and everything's fine on that end.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this issue? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc Shower, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for Tanya Butler doing business as Elder Ride Inc. Ms. Brown?
Mr. President, it's the same situation as the last one. It's wheelchair accessible vehicles, they're operating six vehicles already in service. Um, they've done the application in accordance with requirements of the council, background checks have been done, and all that's good.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this issue? Mr. Cox, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jerry Cox, forty twenty-nine, Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I read in the, uh, the legal advertisement that was in the paper for this item, uh, it says that the question is whether public convenience and necessity justifies the issue of a special, uh, shuttle license to these people. My question is, why is this not, uh, already being provided by the Handy Ride system? And is it not a duplication of that, of that, uh, service that's provided? Uh, and do these people, is this like with the taxi standards? Do they, uh, uh, are their rates set by the city like taxis are? Are they inspected like, uh, the taxis are? And if not, uh, why not? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Brown, the questions for, uh, I guess, how does this complete, compete with Handy Ride? And why is there a need for this service if we have Handy Ride? Are there any standards enforced, and does the city, uh, regulate the rates like taxis?
Well, those are all good questions for Mr. Cox. Um, actually, this is a supplemental service to Handy Ride. It's the exact same type of service. They operate twenty-four seven, seven days a week. They provide additional services that we don't provide. Every one of these private companies that come on lessen the burden on us to provide that transportation. So we welcome them openly. Um, and they don't have any restrictions on the type of transportation they can provide or the time that they provide it. Um, when they come under this ordinance, they are under the vehicle for our regulations. We do it, we will inspect those vehicles. They'll have to have annual wheelchair lift inspections. Um, so they'll come under the ordinance, just like taxis, limos, and other vehicles, vehicles do.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc Shower, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion?
Uh, question, Mr. President. Mr. Brown, uh, as you no doubt remember, about a month ago, we ended up paying a, uh, I think it was like a seventy thousand dollar settlement for a company who was following the city guidelines, and then they, or they were a violation of the city guidelines with, uh, too large of a, of a vehicle size. We tried to enforce it, they went to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they, uh, were denied. And then they turned around and sued the city, next thing we're paying them. We're not gonna have, we're not opening up that type of can of worms all over again on this situation, are we?
Well, Mr. Kling, these, these companies have to submit their business addresses, and they're reviewed by, by the zoning department and approved. So, uh, I couldn't say that they won't have a vehicle in an area where it's not supposed to be overnight, but we would certainly, uh, respond to that. And they, these are companies that are for hire. The vehicles are for hire only, so it's a different situation. Where in the other one, you had, uh, a group home sort of situation where the vehicle was parked there all the time. So this is, this is different, and I think we could enforce this very easily without getting into some of the issues that we did on the other one.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Binion?
Yes, this resolution identifies fifty properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. Uh, the properties are identified on attachment A, uh, by the owner and location. Uh, the written notification was sent by regular mail, and they were in violation of the ordinance, and were given fourteen days to correct the violation. Uh, fifty owners were spilt, failed to respond, and community development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents, and an average cost per property of two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents. Uh, attachment A identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. The owners, uh, were sent, uh, written requests, uh, by regular mail for payment, and they failed to respond. So I'm requesting that property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect the costs. Uh, they were notified of this proposed action and could wish to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? If you'll go to the microphone, please. First, Mr. Timbly Lake, you wanna go first? Okay. Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Leroy Hanks. I live at one-two-one-four-five, Highway two thirty-one North, Meridianville, Alabama.
Welcome, Mr. Hanks.
Good. Yeah, I had bought a property about a year ago, and, uh, it was closed by a mowing, scripture, Kit Riley attorneys. They gave the address, that's why I just stated my address. I have their deed and everything here. Today, I received a notice in the mail that was mailed on the eighteenth of August stating what was gonna happen tonight. I did not receive any prior notices, but notice I received today was sent, mis-sent to that address, one-two-one-four-five Huntsville, Alabama. I went by the day, I said, I'll pay the charges incurred for mowing it. I said, they're overcharging, but, uh, you know, I thought, I can't argue that. I'll pay that charge. The gentleman says, no, you have to pay us a hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee for sending the notices. I went by the post office and said, what happens when a missed address letter comes in here from like the City of Huntsville? They said, it is returned. We did not hold them, did not put them in a box. It goes back to the distribution center, it goes back to the City of Huntsville. I said, are you sure? He said, well, that's what the post office does, it doesn't keep them, it sends them back. So I'm prepared to pay the forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. They said it took the guy to go out and spend ten minutes cutting the yard, but I shouldn't have to pay that hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee. The people surely are working and getting paid without having to put a fee on somebody when they didn't give them a notice. After the second notice, they should have realized something was going on. They should have sent a registered letter to make sure it was going to the person. I have in past years, I've got several properties. I buy by the notices. But several years ago, I got a registered letter from them because of something they got misplaced. And they did have the courage to send it registered to be sure I was getting it. But I'm prepared to pay the forty-seven fifty, but I shouldn't have to pay an administrative fee to send me the letters. The attorney that closed it, that's his letter here, it's got the correct address on it. And talking to the tax elector, tax assessor, they say, well, it could have been a typo. It could have been a typo, cause today I gave them the right address, I said, no, everything's right, except Meridianville. One-two-one-four-five, Highway two thirty-one North, Meridianville. They said, okay, we changed it. They changed it, gave me a new one. And when I got down to my truck, I looked at it, and they had it, they had Meridianville right, they had the address wrong. So they do make typos. I've got the one they did today, right here with me, everyone wants to see it.
Ms. Hanks, I'm with you, sir.
I requested the waiver from the administrative fee, and I'll pay the cost they incurred to have a guy go cut it.
Okay, and you were cited for, what were you cited for?
Weeds, grass.
Okay, and we, we get so many complaints from neighborhoods, so, yeah, if we can work this out, we want you to make sure you keep, maintain your property to city standards, so that, uh, the citizens don't complain about it?
I'm sorry.
Can you maintain your property to city standards, so that we don't have to go through this?
I try to all the time.
Okay.
Just some, I let that one, it's a vacant lot out on Cartagena Road.
Okay.
I let it get grown up a little bit.
Okay. That'll solve the problems. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, if this gentleman drove all the way down from Meridianville, uh, and he seems to have some documentation, uh, could we just carry this over to the next meeting and let him have a chance to meet with, uh, Mr. Binion?
Well, I met with him today, he says...
I'm sorry, sir, Mr. Kling has four.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Let somebody look in, look into it. Let somebody look into it and see if, uh, maybe the administrative fee could be waived this time, if he does have documentation about the address, you know, going into the wrong place or something.
Would you like to ask Mr. Binion?
I, I, I met with him earlier today.
You know, we put that administrative charge on each lien that we place on properties that we cut. Uh, Mr. Hanks essentially told me that he waits to get a notice from us before he goes out and cuts the property. And it's my position that we know that grass grows, we know when it rains a lot, the grass is going to grow, that we should, you shouldn't wait on the city to notify you that your grass should be cut. Uh, we, the, the ordinance, uh, has established that administrative fee, and we've charged that since well before I arrived at the City of Huntsville. And I didn't feel that we should start that slippery slope of starting to waive administrative fees at this point.
Ms. Joffran, could you advise the council, please?
Comment, please?
I think Mr. Binion's correct. I mean, there, there was a clear violation. Um, you know, every, every property owner is responsible for maintaining, uh, their own, their own, uh, yard, making sure it's kept up city standards. Um, administrative fee is tacked on to every one of these, always has been, always will be. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's my advice to the council that it remain, but it's ultimately your decision.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
If what I'm hearing is correct, are you saying?
Ms. Culver, are you addressing Mr. Hanks, or are you just talking?
Okay, let me, let me, I'm gonna direct this to Mr. Binion. Uh, what I'm hearing, Mr. Binion, and first of all, your department has done a great job. And, um, you no doubt cite everybody, uh, including yours truly, uh, if I don't cut my, my lots. Um, but my question is, if there were, well, do we know whether or not, uh, there was a, a mistake in terms of maybe the communications went to the wrong address? Or anything of that nature? And you don't have to say this publicly. I, I guess what I'm asking is that, if you would just look at that, um, if, if it's something that, that we did differently, um, I, I think it could warrant us considering that, um, but absent something on our behalf, then by all means, that administration fee should rightfully be paid, but...
The address we received from the tax assessor is the address that's on the letters. Uh, evidently, when he filed it, or his, as he says, his attorney filed it, the ad, the confusion happened at the tax assessor's office, not with community development.
Okay, I'm, I understand now.
And see, and when we get a property like this, we have to do research on the title and so forth. So essentially, that administrative cost is the charges that we are placing back on the citizens for the additional work we had to do prior to cutting the property.
Absolutely, because we have to load up and go out and cut just one property, and that certainly, uh, costs the taxpayers a lot of money. And I do understand that. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember, say. Sir, did you want, want to address the council further?
Yeah. I have here, the, he gave me a couple today of letters they sent. And they go to a, to a wrong address.
I'm sorry, I, you, bring the microphone up and speak directly, microphone, we couldn't understand you.
Okay, I'm sorry. When I came down today, he was wrong in what I said. I came down today to find out what was going on. Cause this is the first letter I had received. Today, he gave me a copy of the two letters they said to send. They went to the wrong address. I don't know where it came from, but it's the wrong address. It goes to Huntsville, not Meridianville. Has one-two-one-four-five, Highway... Has one-two-one-four-five Highway two-thirty-one North Huntsville. And there's no such address in Huntsville.
Okay.
They should, my feeling is, they should have sent a certified letter after the second one came back. You know it's the wrong address.
Yeah, and we would have to charge the taxpayers for that. And you know, our position is, all citizens should comply with the law and cut their grass, and then we don't have to go through any of this? You know, so if we're going to play positions, that's what the council's position is, is do that. But if we do send certified letters, we're going to have to charge everybody, and then people are going to complain about that? So we, we're always stuck behind the eight ball on this? So the easiest way is comply.
Okay. Once before, I had a house that had several things written up. I went by and fixed them all right away. The inspector came out, and he called, said, "Mr. Hanks, you missed one. Now, I'm giving you a courtesy phone call, you know, you need to get that fixed." So I did. That's all they had to do. You know, you, you don't have to go and stomp somebody because you've got the upper hand, you know. If he wants to charge me two hundred dollars, he can charge it. What that lady had been doing is she didn't do the search on my property. Sure she's getting paid, why is there another charge there? They, they're funded somehow, and I'm sure the fees they make are not the funding for the office. That's my point.
All right.
And I'm willing to pay the forty-seven fifty. I'd like to have that administrative fee waived.
Okay, we've heard you. Ms. Timbley, do you wish to address the council? Next person, we, we heard you. We understand.
Mr. President?
Hold on.
Just before he goes, and Ms. Timbley comes, are you saying to the council tonight that they sent the bill into the wrong address?
Yes, sir. They sent, they sent the letters, I have a copy here, to the wrong address. So it surely got returned to them.
Mr. President, I would think that in fact, that he did not receive the communication at his home address, and that it was an error that we should not force him to pay when he didn't get the notice on time.
And Dr. Showers, we're in the middle of a public hearing. Can I go ahead and get the public hearing, and then we'll discuss this?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Does anyone else from the Public Witch Dress Council? Mr. Timbley?
Good evening. Ralph Timbley, twenty-one seventeen Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-one-zero. I rise because this issue that just came before you is some of the, is similar to what I want to talk about. As you well know, that the liberal mail is inside the United States Constitution. It's the only business that I ever been able to locate that resides within the United States of America's Constitution. In that, the post office has an obligation to deliver mail under the private express statute, which is what we're talking about, a third-party entity, as to whether they have done their due diligence. If they have not, it is unconscionable that you would charge somebody for a, a entity to which you relied upon, which has proven itself to be unreliable, and that they do not do their duty. I know we live in the, in an era of electronic data. However, the basic American venue of communication is the United States Postal Service, which have its officials seem to be employed in a way that these officials abscond from their lawful judiciary responsibility. So I entreat this council in light of the fact that it appears that this has been one of those cases where they, this entity may not have done its due diligence and have caused this gentleman some unnecessary trepidation that you find within your heart and wisdom to ensure, first of all, that the post office officials within this entity do their due diligence. And in this case, his trepidation be ameliorated by your granting his request because he did offer to pay for the actual work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, do you wish to address the council? If you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name's William Walker with a ten-twenty-four Antietam Road, Huntsville, three-five, three-five-eight-zero-three.
Welcome.
I also got a notice about some vegetation that been removed from a property that I formerly owned. This property was discharged as a result of a bankruptcy last, in January, I think. I guess, you know, I've been through a legal process to get this taken out of my name. Why am I still being, getting billed for this, I guess?
Okay, is that your question?
Yes. And how do I, how do I get out of this?
Okay, Mr. Binion, could you explain this?
I'm not familiar with that one, but we take all of our records from the tax assessor's office. So if the property is still listed in his name with the tax assessor's office, that's what we are obligated by law to use to notify owners of property.
Ms. Jelfon, could you add anything?
I can't, but if the, if there is some confusion or some discrepancy about this, the council can always delete this one from the list by voice motion. And community development can take another look at it and see.
Mr. Walker, what is the address of the property in question?
It's a ten-fifteen Vicksburg Lane, Huntsville, three-five-eight-zero-three.
But it's not your property anymore. It's under bankruptcy, so you would leave the lien on the property if you've had to cut it.
Okay. Does anyone else from the Public Witch Dress Council on this issue? Public hearing is now closed.
Wait, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Reed, didn't see you.
That's back over here in the corner.
The public hearing's back open. Ms. Reed, you're in.
I only have a quick question. What happens to the letters that sent back to you from the post office? What do you all do with them from there, and how do you handle a situation like this, is my concern? Do you have somebody that gets those letters back? And tell me, what do you do with them then? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Binion, the question is, what do you do with the return letter?
We, we work all return letters. So if there's a bad address on a property and it comes back to us, then that notifies us that we need to do further research to find the correct address.
And that means going to the courthouse and looking into the tax assessor directly?
Well, that would mean trying any other means to try to find a good address for the owner. So it could be, we originally got it from the tax assessor, but it could mean using some search engines or so forth to see if we can find the property owner.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the Public Witch Dress Council on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Dr. Showers, I know you wanted to discuss this. We could go ahead.
I do. In light of the information that the gentleman has given us tonight, the fact that he was mailed an incorrect address letter, I don't think he ought to have to pay the fee that is being required. He has agreed to pay for the cutting service, but because we, the system did not work for him this time with the right address, I don't think he should be made to pay that.
And, and Dr. Showers, Mr. Binion, can you explain the dress again? You got it straight from the county tax assessor?
We still have the correct, I mean, the address that's listed with the tax assessor's office. It wasn't an error made in community development.
So Dr. Showers, does that, does that change your opinion? Any of the city did what it had to do was go to the court county, the courthouse?
The fact it remained is that he has the, the wrong address. The address is not correct. I don't know how that happened, but according to this gentleman here, the address, would you come back to the microphone, sir?
Dr. Showers, the public hearing's been closed.
Okay. According to what he said in his earlier statements, that the address is incorrect. And, Mr. Binion, how is the address that you have different from the address that he, is alleged that is his address?
I think his says Meridianville, and the one that we have says Huntsville.
Okay. Well, I, I just don't think we ought to fault him for a mistake regardless of where it came from. If it's not correct, it's, it's not correct. And he knows where he live, and he, his address is in Meridianville. Is that right?
Sir, sir, Dr. Showers?
All right.
The public hearing's closed.
It is, so. I just want to make that point, that just don't think we ought to charge him because the address was wrong. Not a fault of his, not a fault of community development.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, it certainly wasn't the community development's fault. They went to change, check the records. I would think it would be the property owner's fault that the, the records had the wrong address, but maybe I'm mistaken. Dr. Robinson?
Did you receive letters back from, that were, did, did the letters you sent to Mr. Hanks come back to your office?
No. And in fact, the one that he has, it arrived late. It still arrived to him, the one that he said he received today or yesterday. He did receive it, but we didn't get the letter back.
So there was no indication to you that it was a bad address? So you would not have gone through your regular process?
Correct.
Mr. Hanks, in his comments indicated that he had numerous properties. Have you, do you have any record of having sent repeated notices to Mr. Hanks in the past? I think you said something about, you said he waits for-
Well, that's what he explained to me. But yes, we do have records of having sent a notice to him in the past, not on necessarily this particular property, but on some of his other properties.
On other properties.
Yes.
And then my other question is regarding the Vicksburg property. The suggestion, Mr. Joffrey, and made the, the suggestion that we could possibly delete the Vicksburg property until investigation was made about that? Is that possible to amend the motion with that regard?
Yes, it's very possible, if you want to do that.
I would like to do that.
Okay. So let's go ahead and take that one right now, then we'll, we'll discuss the main motion as amended. So Dr. Robinson has moved that we, we delete the Vicksburg Lane, one-zero-one-five Vicksburg Lane, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-zero-three from this resolution for further study and investigation. Is there a second to that? A second by Dr. Showers? So now we're discussing the amendment. How does the council feel about the amendment? Are there questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling?
When this thing first come up and I was asking about it, you know, what I had wanted was for Mr. Binion to take a, a second look at that or take a look at it and found out, then I found out further discussion that he had already taken a look at it. Mr. Binion has a pretty good track record in my book as far as being a very competent department head and taking care of, taking care of things. I would, don't have a heart attack. I would be willing to pretty much follow his recommendation on both of these motions. And if it turns out that we do keep the full administrative fee involved, then possibly we could provide some assistance to him as far as letting the, the county know that, that there was a fault through their doing, and possibly they may want to make some adjustment to him. That's a long shot, but I'll support Mr. Binion on his recommendation on both of these.
May I clarify, just to clarify, the Vicksburg property is one with regard to bankruptcy, and you did not know about that one? And had no, no conversation with the property owner?
No, and that's fine. If it's not in his name, the lien is on the property. So if it's not his property, really, the lien is placed on the property. So really, just the notification should have gone to someone else. So we can take it off this time, and we'll find out who it actually is listed with, and we'll send it to them.
So this one would merit a further investigation?
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend this resolution by deleting Vicksburg, one-zero-one-five Vicksburg Lane, three-five-eight-zero-three. Further discussion? We're going to vote just on this amendment, which is Vicksburg Lane. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So the amendment is passed. So now we're discussing the main motion as amended by removing Vicksburg Lane. So I think the discussion needs to be what to do with Mr. Hanks. How does the council feel?
Well, I'd express how I feel. Based on the fact that he did not get the notice at the correct address, he shouldn't have to pay.
Okay. So you, you want to, are you going to make a motion, or do you want somebody else to, or what?
Counsel, if you're going to make a motion.
If I could just comment on that for just a second. What I'm looking for is whether or not the city of Huntsville made a mistake. And what I'm gathering is that-
Ms. Culver, I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you on the record.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
What I'm, what I'm looking for and trying to ascertain is whether or not the city of Huntsville made a mistake. And what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Binion, is that a mistake has not been made by the city of Huntsville as it relates to this?
No, the, the city of Huntsville has not made a mistake.
And, and what I'm afraid of, while I truly empathize with Mr. Hanks and, and Dr. Showers, I certainly understand your, your point of view and, and appreciate that. I'm, I'm concerned about where that may take us if, if everybody or anybody else comes up and says, you know, a mistake was made somewhere else other than on our behalf. And I, I feel strongly that if we made the mistake, then it's certainly incumbent upon us to rectify that and make it, make it right. I believe his beef, if I could use that term, would be with the, um, um, tax assessor's office and, and not the city of Huntsville. It would appear to me that we would probably be paying for that with taxpayers' money for something the tax assessor's office did. So, so having said that, I will, I will make that motion, but I probably will not support that, that motion, if, if I can say that.
Yeah, I'd be, probably better not to make the motion if you're not going to support it.
I would make the motion.
I want to support my colleague, Dr. Showers.
And then, Dr. Showers, Dr. Showers, do you, do you want to make the motion?
I move to delete the administrative fee attached to this particular item.
Your motion is to delete the administration, administrative fee to Mr. Hanks's property on this resolution?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion more indepth.
All right. So we have a, a motion to amend this resolution by deleting the administration, administrative fee charged to Mr. Hanks. It was made, the motion to amend was made by Dr. Showers and seconded by Mr. Culver. Discussion? Call for a vote. We'll call roll call. Dr. Showers, how do you vote?
I vote aye in favor of the motion.
Dr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Culver?
No.
Mr. Kling?
No.
The motion fails. We are now at the main motion as amended with the Vicksburg Lane deletion. Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries as amended. We have no public hearings to be set. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, you have three minutes to address the council. Some of the handwriting is hard for me to read, so I'll do my best with the names tonight, and you may have to correct it when you come up here. The first up is Earl Jordan. Mr. Earl Jordan? Mr. Jordan, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Earl Jordan, twenty-six oh five Carl's Bag Drive, Huntsville, Alabama.
Welcome.
Code thirty-five-eight-one-o.
Sir, we're having trouble hearing you. If you could put the microphone right in front of your mouth and speak loudly. Thank you.
My name is Earl Jordan. I live at twenty-six oh five Carl's Bag Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, area code thirty-five-eight-one-o.
Welcome.
Okay. To the council, to the mayor, and to Dr. Shower, I got a big problem. The problem is an empty lot next to my house. The grass is ways high right now. And in the last three weeks, I done killed three snakes, and one in my garage, and two on my lawn. And I called, and they said it got, it take fourteen days. That's unacceptable. My life is a, a, a state because I don't know the snake is poison or non-poison. It's ridiculous. This, this community is a well-kept community. I put against anybody a community. But we got one bad apple there, and he going to spoil the whole community. You know what the people say, one bad apple will destroy a bushel of apple? It's empty lot, but it seem like he want to cut the lot at his disposal. His, his, his time to cut it. I mean, that's unacceptable. I can't wait no ten, fourteen days. I got to go and cut my yard. I got to watch for snakes while I'm cutting the yard. And I have peoples coming over. They nobody, the community in there, nobody, how many snakes that I have killed, and showed it to them. Something got to be done. Something got to be done. I'm not going to put, to put up with that situation. Something got to be done. I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking my councilman, Dr. Shower, come up with something to eliminate those snakes calling on my property.
Ms. Ju-
President?
Dr. Showers?
Mr. Binion, is, is he- Mr. Benyon, is he still here?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, I don't see him.
He's coming down. Mr. Benyon?
Mr. Jordan, would you tell Mr. Benyon the address of that property?
2605 Carlsbad Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, area code 35810, right off the Alaska Pipe, turn on Stone Brook, right back on Carlsbad.
Sir, is that your address or the address of the bad property?
The bad property is 2607.
2607, okay.
2507.
2507 or 2607?
2507.
Okay.
2607.
2507 with the tall grass.
Okay.
Mr. Benyon, do you have any record that has already been cited?
I'm not familiar with that particular property, but we can get somebody out there first thing in the morning, and if it's not cited, we'll get it written up then.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Benyon, can you get with Mr. Jordan right now and go over this?
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I got one more. I'm concerned, you know, I don't think we, I know that it may be an order since fourteen days or two weeks or whatever. I can't wait two weeks. I can't wait that the snake bite me. I'm a diabetic, and if a snake bite me, I'm gone.
Okay.
So that's all I got to say.
Mr. Jordan, if you'll get with Mr. Benyon, we'll do our best. The next person is the gentleman from Ardmore. His first name looks like Jim. Sir, if you'll go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
James Bolden.
Bolton, B-O-L-T-E-N. Say it again?
Bolden.
Bolden.
I live at 9350 Highway 53, Ardmore, Alabama, 35739.
Thank you, sir. And council members, Mr. Bolden gave an accident report to us, and each of you has a copy on your desk. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, that accident happened on the 26th of last year. Police didn't take my statement. The insurance company told me they had settled it. Well, they didn't tell me they didn't settle it for me, so I got lost, I got sued. But the police not taking my side of the statement, I can't get an attorney.
And so you're here asking today for what?
I mean, what do you want me to do? They held court out there, her lawyer was out there at the accident. They held court out there. What I'm going to do, just get ready to go for the hanging?
Yeah, and I'm...
The police talked to the law, her lawyer. I had a front row seat to the accident. Nobody asked me anything.
Okay, so your problem is, a year ago, at this traffic wreck, you don't believe the police behaved properly? Is that what you're saying?
There was three police officers there. They act like they was at a social event.
Okay. So...
Mr. President.
Dr. Showers.
Ms. Bolton, did you write your version of what happened at this accident?
Yeah, you have it. I turned it up there.
And you're saying that they did not acknowledge your position in this?
They didn't. All they, the policeman asked me for my driver's license and insurance and registration. And there was, the one that asked me for it brought it back. And the guy, the Appleton, the one that wrote it up, was, he's up by his car, so I went up there to give him my side. He got in the car and took off.
So he didn't take your side?
Uh-uh. And so by them not taking my statement, I can't get an attorney to... Every attorney I talk to say, we can't help you.
Did you have the name of the officer that wrote this up?
It's Appleton, it's on the report there.
Mr. President, can I ask the chief something?
Absolutely. Mr. Joffrey, could you advise the council first?
This may need to be a private conversation between Mr. Showers and the chief, if you have a question to ask him.
I do.
Okay. Well, we can take...
The chief here.
Does this need to be private conversation?
It might. I mean, I'm not totally sure what the issue is, but if it's just the failure of, your alleged failure of a police officer to write down your statement and include that as part of the report, then, I mean, that's already been made public, if it's something more than that.
Dr. Showers, why don't you confer with Mr. Joffrey on what your question is? And we'll wait for you.
I'm told that I can ask my question, and the question is simply, is it normal, chief?
Hold one second. Dr. Showers, we need chief here, or somebody represent the chief.
Okay.
Chief, if you go over the microphone, please? Can you bring other officers with you if you need to?
Yes, sir.
Is it a normal, in the process of writing up a accident report, to not get both sides, the opinion of both vehicles that were involved?
They do interview both drivers, both vehicles, if possible.
Okay, do you still allow the participant in an accident to write down themselves what happened? Or is that done by the officer?
Now, the officer's judgment, it says at the bottom of the report, and the officer's opinion based on the evidence, usually goes from a combination of how the vehicles crashed, the impact, maybe witness statements that they talked to other people, they listened to both, they look at the damage. Just depends on the circumstances of whether it's intersection-related, appears maybe speed-related, maybe different circumstances involved. We use what's called an e-crash. It's an electronic form to where the officer fills it out on his mobile laptop and can submit it at that time. And it is just that, it is just the officer's opinions. And it is true that attorneys will use that as a tool to non-represent certain people. But in reality, those are just officers' opinions. They do not hold the weight of law, even though a lot of attorneys would like for them to. And they can be litigated. They will tell you they can't be, but they can be. It's strictly your insurance company's option as to whether or not they want to take the weight of that officer as fact or just his opinion.
And Dr. Showers, let's see if this suggestion, maybe the chief and one of his officers can go with Mr. Bolden. If they can't come to some kind of agreement, then Mr. Bolden can speak to us at the end of the meeting, I mean, end of this public communication.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Bolden?
What's that?
Will you go meet with the police officers and explain to them what your problem is? And then if you don't feel like you've been answered properly, you can come back to the council meeting at the end of this session?
I'll meet with the chief.
Okay, go ahead.
Glad to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. William Walker? Mr. Walker spoke earlier. Mr. Walker still here? Terry Rice? Is Terry Rice here? Not sure the name, Suzie McGellin, Jones Valley Drive? Ms. Jackie Reed, I know she's here.
Now, you all don't wish I wasn't here, I know that.
No.
Good evening. Address the same.
We're still amazed you took vacation a couple meetings ago.
My mother-in-law was 101. She's very sick. She said the mean don't ever die, and that's me and her. That's a good thing to hear.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thanks for lying public input. Congratulations to the chiefs and all that retired. Why would you want to retire so young, anyone? I don't understand it. I can't get that in my head. I want to go back to Mr. Randy Taylor. I was promised him at the last meeting, I wouldn't mention anything. But whatever this man wanted to stay with the city Huntsville, I've been following him for seventeen years. I've been coming down here thirty years. But for seventeen years, I've watched him. He don't bow down to you. He tells the truth. He lays it on the table, whether you like it or don't like it. We, you didn't, I told him, no matter what you wanted, I will promise to help you get it if you will stay here with the city Huntsville. That man needs to stay with the city. I'm very concerned at some of our people that are retiring. He's one of the very few that I trusted in this city. Oh, that's not good. Anyway, let's get into the budget. I got some more issues, but I'll cover me at the end of the meeting. The budget's on my mind right now. You know, when I sit up here, and we don't have any work sessions on the budget anymore, because I got a whole lot to say about the budget. We used to meet up there, and the department heads would tell you what they needed to do their jobs, and we all needed to know what we needed. We don't do that in the last eight years. Excuse me? You bring it in here, and you lay it on the table, and it's not discussed too much. Well, we got a lot of hungry employees sitting right here tonight. Look at them. The budget, I believe, and I think, and I know, you should give them at least a three to a five percent raise. All of you sitting up there, I don't know what you making, I don't care. But these employees need a three percent raise. Don't give me a one percent raise. I don't want you one percent raise. That's nothing. It's really nothing. Give these employees at least, you do what you want to for who, what you want to in this city? You've got a communications director. I'm your communications director. I don't charge you anything. Get over it. Let her go and let me be that. I don't charge you anything. Give that to the city employees. She makes ninety-nine thousand and nine hundred. You give, you waived the fee for Polaris, the fee for, I know you did, because I checked it out, over four, you did, sir, thank you. You waived that fee and it's over four-hundred-something, fifty thousand dollars. I don't know what else you're giving all these developers. You're doing everything in this world. Us, we, the employees, nor I, won't live to see all this development that you're trying to do in this city. We don't have time to wait on you all to line all this stuff up for your developers. Anyway...
Ms. Reed, we need to wrap up. Your time's up.
I need to wrap it up, but I need to tell you one more thing you're fixing to do at your...
Quickly.
Resolution authorizing the mayor into an agreement between the city Huntsville and the Limestone County Commission to acquire parcels of property outside the corporate limits of the city? Come on, boys. Let's keep it in the city, and let's take care of what we got. You can't take care of what we got. Let's get real out here and use some common sense.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I'll be back.
Yes. Mr. Howard Ross? Is Mr. Ross still here? Mr. Leroy Hanks? Mr. Hanks, do you wish to speak again? I believe it's Leon Steele, Settle Road, his address? 10180 Settle or Settle Road? Not here. That ends communications from the public. We have no Huntsville utility... Sir, you can speak at the end of the meeting. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have board appointments to be voted on. We have a resolution to appoint Terrence Vickerstaff to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to begin August 27, 2015, and expire June 26, 2018. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to appoint Kerry Farrenbach to the healthcare authority of the city of Huntsville for a term to begin August 27, 2015, and expire August 15, 2021. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have several board appointment nominations. We have a nomination of Toby Shear for appointment to the beautification board for a term to begin September 10, 2015, and expire August, October 1, 2017, made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination of Carl Shear for appointment to the beautification board for a term to begin September 10, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, also made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination of Bernice Burnett for reappointment to the beautification board for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by Dr. Showers. We have a nomination of Donald Hodge for reappointment to the beautification board for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by Dr. Showers. We have a nomination by the chair of Cynthia Masusi for reappointment to the beautification board for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018. We have a nomination of Shannon Windsor for appointment to the beautification board for a term to begin September 10, 2015, and expire October 1, 2017, made by Dr. Robinson. We have a nomination of John Egan for appointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin September 30, 2015, and expire October 1, 2016, made by the chair. We have a nomination of Diane Reynolds for appointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by the chair. We have a nomination of Jim Link for reappointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by Mr. Kling. We have a nomination of Lowell Zauer for reappointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by the chair. We have a nomination of Tony Smith for reappointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by Dr. Showers. We have a nomination of John Sharp for reappointment to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to begin October 1, 2015, and expire October 1, 2018, made by Dr. Robinson. We're now at 10A, resolution authorizing expenditure for payment. Dr. Showers?
Mr. President, I move that seven million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cent be approved.
Second?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers, do you have a finance committee report?
No, finance report tonight.
And Dr. Showers, I will get with you about budget work sessions, and we'll agree to the times and dates and announce those publicly. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think y'all were moving much too fast for me. I didn't expect it. Few things going on this week. I have no appointments to work with. Few things going on this week. Green Street Market is open till 8:00 PM tonight. Music on the square is Thursday and Friday evenings, and this Sunday is Jazz in the Parks, starting at 6:00 o'clock in Big Spring Park East. And then we have the Healthy Huntsville 100-mile walk. Then over the next three months, we're challenging everybody to walk 100 miles, which comes up to about a mile and a half a day, or maybe two miles a day. And it's a good thing for us, and one thing we're trying to do is trying to get a jump on the holiday season before we get in the holiday season and have all the, have the holiday season carry with us. One of the things I'd like to say tonight, you know, and I've tried to put it out in our emails and in our communications, it's tough talking about somebody's salary. And it's tough talking about what somebody deserves to have, what somebody should have. Every one of us would like to have everything that we can have in the salary field. And I want to say that I appreciate everybody, everybody who works for the city of Huntsville, because you're part of our group, our family. And I guess we're like a family. At some points, we'll have some discussions about different things, and we may have some different opinions on it. But at the end of it, we all come back together, and we work, and we do the job that we were hired to do, and we do that for the city of Huntsville. So I want to tell everybody, I appreciate you being here tonight. We may have some clashes, we might have some different opinions, but that's also part of the process, and that's part of our process as we go through the budgetary time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I certainly share your view that we do value all of our employees. And as Ms. Reed said, I wish we could give them all a raise of that magnitude. As you may remember, I think it was back in 2012 that we attempted to do a five percent pay raise. Mr. President, I have a, and maybe this should come under unfinished business, but I would like to, at some point in time, make a motion to untable the parity pay. And you would prefer that I do that now?
Ms. Culver, a motion to untable something's inappropriate. It's not proper parliamentary procedure. If you have something in an ordinance you want to introduce, you can introduce it if you have it written up. But once an item is put on the table, it must come up at the next regular council meeting after it's been tabled, or it goes away?
Okay. So I need to, I want to reintroduce the parity pay. And maybe I should ask Mr. Joffrey on this question, if I may. And I, maybe I should ask Mr. Jeffrey on this question, uh, if I may. If I reintroduce that tonight, would it require a unanimous consent on the council?
Wouldn't require unanimous consent to introduce it. You could introduce it if you have a copy, but in order to get it, it's not on the printed agenda, so you'd need unanimous consent to get it on the agenda, and then unanimous consent to consider it at tonight's meeting. So, two unanimous consent votes if you want it to be considered for action. No, nothing's required if you just want to introduce it.
That answers my question, uh, because it appears that if I were to introduce it and to take action on it, that I'm gonna have to have unanimous consent to take action. With that being said, um, what I'd like to do is to introduce, reintroduce the parity ordinance, and we'll get it, um, a motion to introduce the parity ordinance.
If you just want to introduce it, do you have it writ, in written form? Do you have?
Uh, I, I do, but it's gonna require some modification. In fact, I would like to just recall the former ordinance. Uh, I don't remember the number. I think it was thirteen, ordinance number thirteen. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey on?
Ordinance number fifteen, one fifty-five was.
Fifteen, one fifty-five.
The ordinance that was tabled on March twenty-sixth.
That is the ordinance that I would like to reintroduce, please. That is, I make a motion to reintroduce.
You don't need to make a motion. You just say if, uh, you know, normally our procedures are, our bylaws are, you have to provide a writing to all of us and, and introduce it. Council members, are you fine with this? Because we all know what it is. It was introduced before we can find.
Can we get a copy of it, or email, or next day or so, if you don't have it tonight?
Yeah.
I have a, I have a copy here tonight, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it would no longer have that same number. It would get a new number.
So, we're gonna say that Mr. Culver's parity pay ordinance has been properly introduced tonight.
But, but it's not going to be the same ordinance. It's going to have changes to it. Is that what I understood you to say?
We'll amend it at that time.
Okay, so, we have, could you hand me the written copy? We're gonna put this in the record as you're introducing this.
That's good.
So, th, this is what you introduced before.
That is correct.
Okay. So, it has been properly introduced. Now, go ahead, Ms. Culver.
Well, I tell you what, I'm going to use the element of surprise. I have no further comment at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Mr. Kling.
I guess, can we ask, how is this ordinance that you're introducing different from what, what was introduced previously? Can you?
Uh, council members, uh, people are complaining they can't hear us, and so I don't know if it's the laptops in front of your microphone, but somehow we need to, uh, speak loudly into the microphone so people can hear.
Basically, uh, Councilman Kling, it's, it's going to be the same ordinance that was introduced back in March, uh, with some amendments that we'll make at that time.
Ms. Kling, you have the floor.
Well, uh, I don't really have, have too much. I guess we're kinda moving, moving a bit. Um, I do want to thank the, uh, the people from the Mayfair neighborhood that came out to a neighborhood meeting that we had Tuesday, uh, this week. Good, active neighborhood. They're really getting involved and, uh, you know, similar, well, I think we've all said at different times when we meet with neighborhood associations, it's really, uh, really good to, uh, see people get involved and care about their neighborhoods. And, uh, I don't, I don't know, I think the chief is probably in the back room, but I just want to tell him that his, um, community relations officers from South Precinct did a very, very good, uh, presentation, and it was very much appreciated. Uh, and in addition to that, in my town meeting that I had, uh, Monday night, uh, good sessions, and we followed up on those requests of information and, and things, uh, that's all I have, Mr. President. Looking forward to some fun events this weekend.
Thank you. Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce to the public that our public meeting, uh, for the Northern Bypass that was originally scheduled for next Tuesday, September the first, uh, that meeting is being, uh, uh, let me say again, this meeting is on for September the first, uh, next Tuesday. That meeting is designed to discuss the Northern Bypass. That meeting will be held at thirty-seven oh three Parkway North, uh, at the Fellowship of Faith Church. And that meeting time is from five to seven. Those that are interested in the Northern Bypass, you can come out for a public meeting, uh, next Tuesday from five to seven at Fellowship of Faith Church. But I also like to announce that originally I had planned for my town meeting, uh, next Tuesday, but because, um, several things going on that day, the big picture, uh, that meeting is being changed, uh, to September the eighteenth. Uh, it's at six o'clock, and it will be at the Shower Center. Uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna get an opportunity to do a walkthrough at the Ice Plex, and of course, uh, on, uh, the Indian Creek Presbyterian Association will observe its one hundred and forty-fifth annual session, uh, at the BBC North Hall, uh, at seven o'clock. That would be, uh, September the eighteenth at, uh, seven o'clock. The Pulaski Pike from Spartman Drive to Maston Lake, uh, is Mr. Haskey here tonight? Y'all didn't get that?
Did you want Mr. McNeese?
Chris, would you come to the microphone? Chris McNeese, is he here tonight? I'd like to thank the Public Works Department that is handling our street paving, uh, that section of town from Spartman Drive to Maston Lake Road. We've had so many comments this week on the completion of that section. Also, from Waxburg, uh, well, that's not Waxburg, but what is that marked? Where the oatwood paving is going west.
Andrew Jackson.
Andrew Jackson Way. Uh, they've already to, uh, Meridian Street, halfway, uh, towards, uh, the new Lawery Drive. They were merely met today. And I guess, uh, bags of comments on those projects being done, and citizens, uh, in addition to those calling positive about it being done, there's another group of citizens, Chris, that is wondering how we're gonna handle, uh, from, uh, that point to Jordan Lane. Now, when you pass the intersection at Pulaski Pike, uh, that road certainly is, uh, in need of repaving. I could not tell them when we were going to do that. I just know that it's on the list to be done. But I just want to commend you with what you're doing, uh, with our street paving, and I'm telling the citizens there's more to come. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
I would be remiss. I've been trying to get our city administrator, uh, Mr. John Hamilton, uh, to address an issue that has become very dear to me. All of us know that, uh, the Grissom High School is being built, and Jemison is being built. They are aggressively moving forward on both, uh, sites. Uh, however, at the Jemison, uh, site, there are some citizens who are calling, and I've had several to call about, uh, the walking bridge, or the bridge that will go over, uh, the ditch there so that students, uh, don't have to go all the way down to Winchester Road and then come back up Pulaski Pike, uh, to go to the new high school. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, could I get you to address, uh, the city's position, the school board position, and where we are with putting, uh, a, a, uh, walking bridge over that site where students, we will be walking over? If I could get you to address that.
Yes, Dr. Showers. And what I, what I really have is, is an interim report, and there'll be more information to follow. It's, it's an issue that we're actively working with, uh, the administration, with, uh, with the school system. Uh, the issue is that at the, the Jemison site, there's a pretty large residential directly behind the school site, you know, Jemison and, and McNair, McNair Junior High, uh, that with, without access into the rear of the campus, uh, the children coming out of that neighborhood would have a pretty significant walk to get all the way around to the front of the campus. We've been in discussions with, uh, as I said, with the, uh, with the administration there, uh, about getting them to include a pedestrian bridge over a significant ditch that essentially makes up the rear boundary of that campus, uh, so that the, the children are able to cross that ditch and get onto the campus without going all the way out, uh, to the major road network and come around to the front of the school. Uh, I haven't measured it, but my guess is that would probably add a mile or more to the walk, uh, for many of the children out of that neighborhood where the bridge would, would cut that down significantly. Now, the, uh, it is our position that that bridge, uh, should be included as part of the school construction, and that would be, uh, a responsibility of the school system. But that's only a portion of the solution. There's also a large part of it that would remain the responsibility of the city, and that's the sidewalk network that would connect that neighborhood to the bridge. So, uh, as we're in discussions with the school system, uh, the position we've taken is that the school system should include the pedestrian bridge over that ditch, uh, in their construction plans, and they will include all the appropriate sidewalks, both in the rear and the front of the school, to ensure that the children throughout that area can walk to school if they're close enough.
Uh, who, uh, has made the decision of where the bridge is going to cross, uh, that ditch for the children to cross?
Dr. Shower, I don't believe that the precise location has, has been decided yet. That's something that, uh, that we'll talk to them about, and we have some meetings coming up in the next week with, uh, with key parties from the administration there at Huntsville City Schools. But that will be part of that discussion, is making sure that as we look at the appropriate pedestrian routes coming out of the neighborhood, that the, that the bridge is put in a place that makes sense, uh, and is convenient for, for those pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Mr. President, my final is, uh, the twentieth anniversary of the Million Man March would be next Thursday, September the tenth, uh, at the Shower Center. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Robinson?
Just wanted to add my thanks to others, uh, for, to Randy Taylor, for the work he has done for the city. Randy and I, uh, were in Class Thirteen of, uh, Leadership Huntsville in nineteen ninety-nine together. It's where I first met him, and I had many occasions while I was on the school board to come to his office and, uh, pick his brain about financial issues. He was always very generous with his time and, and his insight, and I know that we will miss him. Last night, we had the opportunity to gather with the community watch organizations in South Huntsville to, uh, welcome Captain Dwayne McCarver, who will be the new precinct captain at the South Precinct. We will miss Captain Harris and wish him well, uh, in his new role as Deputy Chief, and I, we know he will serve the city as well as he did the South Precinct, and look forward to working with Captain McCarver. Uh, also want to thank Kathy Martin, our city engineer. She has been incredibly generous with her time lately. She's actually created a great, uh, road show that she's put together and has shared with the South Huntsville Business Association at a town hall meeting last week, and then at the Chaffee Neighborhood Association meeting this week regarding the South Huntsville overpasses. It's a complicated process, project, and she has gotten to the point now where she can express it in terms that everybody can understand. And, uh, and it will be a, a challenging process for a couple of years, but it will be a great project once it's completed. And she's making it easier for people to understand how it's going to impact their lives and how to communicate with it. And finally, um, want to share my congratulations with Grissom High School that was recently ranked in the top five hundred high schools by, in the country, by Newsweek Magazine, one of only, one of only two schools in the state of Alabama to be ranked by, uh, by Newsweek. Uh, also, congratulations to New Century Technology High School, also ranked by, um, Newsweek as the top five hundred schools for low-income students. So, we have great things, again, one of two high schools in Alabama to be listed. So, uh, we have great things going on in our city, and it's reflected in our students, and, um, congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Dr. Showers.
Uh, I forgot to mention, the North Huntsville Business Association is on the move. Uh, I want to thank the city administration for their support, Michelle Jordan, Shane Davis, and others who have been coming out, Ken Binion, uh, and some others, uh, Mr. Diamond, uh, who have been coming out to meet the people, uh, because we are trying to show the positiveness of North Huntsville, and that North Huntsville does matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And follow up on that note with the schools in North Huntsville. Uh, J.O. Johnson's playing Lee Huntsville, uh, Friday night at Milton Frank Stadium. Dr. Showers, who are you pulling for?
Jaguars.
And, uh, it's one of the few local games we have Friday night, so I hope everybody will, uh, attend. If you're not, if you can't attend, it's also gonna be shown on Comcast seventeen, WOW three, uh, by ETV Huntsville dot com. Uh, council members and the public, we're gonna take a recess till eight fifteen to change the paper. We'll convene back approximately eight fifteen.
Mark, is the computer man here tonight, I T S? It's locked out some kind of way. I've hit the password several times and it's locked out. They've got a tape, need to unlock it. Who is the person in I T S now? I don't know him.
Because I thought they were waiting for me.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'll just wait till tomorrow.
As the chambers come back to order, we're now back in the meeting. Thirteen is unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is ordinance number 15-598 amending ordinance number 8979, classification and salary plan ordinance. This was introduced August 13, 2015, the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mr. Thomas, can you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is just an amendment to the classification plan based upon some audits conducted by human resources.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is ordinance number 15-599 amending budget ordinance 14-665 to modify the authorized strength of various departments. This was introduced August 13, 2015, the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, this is just the corresponding budget ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have four items for introduction tonight. 14A is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land lying north of Caldwell Lane and on the east side of Keegan Drake Road. B is an introduction of an ordinance to adopt the city of Huntsville's annual budget for fiscal year 2016, beginning October 1, 2015. C is introduction of a resolution to approve the city of Huntsville's 1990 capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2016 through 2025. D is introduction of a resolution to approve the city of Huntsville 2014 capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2016 through 2025. We're now at, Dr. showers?
I would like to ask that items 14B, 14C, and 14D be put on the work session.
And we will do that, sir. As soon as we can find the time, we will work on a time next week and have a work session. Fifteen is new business items for consideration or action. Please notify the chair of any items you'd like to hold. The chair holds 15C.
15E.
You're going to hold 15E, okay.
D is in dog.
D. So, right now, we have 15C, D, and E.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson holds aye. Chair holds N is in Nancy. And the chair holds 15R, which is the one that was added. Just want to make sure the public understands what it is. Are there any other items?
What were those? C?
Yeah, we'll start at the beginning. 15C is in Charlie, 15D is in Delta, 15E is in Echo, 15I, 15N is in Nancy, and 15R, which is the item that was added.
And what was R?
R was a new item. It was the request authorization to advertise and fill a vacant budgeted position of legal secretary two that we added at the beginning of the meeting and I just wanted to make sure it didn't look like we're trying to slip something in. So, we've held 15C, 15D, 15E, 15I, 15N, and 15R. 15A is a resolution authorizes the city attorney to seek a forfeiture of a security bond issued by Hartford Fire Insurance Company. B is a resolution authorizing condemnation proceedings to acquire permanent sanitary sewer easements for the Wilson Cove Sewer Project. F is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Little John Engineering Associates, Inc., for surveying services for Chase Farms, Topo, and Boundary, project number 6515 SP 56. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number nine to the agreement between the city of Huntsville and Johnson Associates, Johnson and Associates Consulting Engineers, LLC, for utility easement acquisition for Church Street and Pratt Avenue widening and realignment, Phase One, state project number STPHV-4500-200, and city project number 6501 RD 05. H is a resolution authorizing mayor into a land lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and Timothy S. Benningfield for the lease of farmland on Marden Road adjacent to the city's water pollution control department. J is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 14-665 by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. K is a resolution authorizing approval of travel expense reports. L is a resolution authorizing mayor into the special employment agreement between the city of Huntsville and Edith Mays. M is a resolution authorizing mayor into agreements with the low bidder meeting specifications outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the city of Huntsville and Platinum Mortgage, Inc., as a participating lender for the down payment assistance program. P is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the budgeted position of human resources analyst two, grade 16, at a higher than minimum rate if necessary. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number 22 to the supplement and development agreement TIF 5 Series 2010B to the annexation and development agreement between the city of Huntsville and LW Redstone Company, LLC. The chair moves in consolidation approval of 15A and B, 15F through H, 15J through M, 15O through Q.
Second.
Motion consolidated approved by the chair, second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15C. 15C is a resolution making required certifications pursuant to Alabama Code 11-99-4, creating tax increment financing district, district six, and approving the project plan for TIF District Six pursuant to Alabama Code 11-991 at SEEK. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Mr. Joe Fallon, could you explain this, please?
Members of the council, this is the resolution that creates tax increment financing District Six. As it's been presented to you in prior council meetings, it adopts the project plan and indicates which taxes will be part of the, are, part of the TIF district and which ones will not. All of the applicable millage will be included within the tax district except for the six and a half mills that goes to the state of Alabama. Are there any details that you'd like to have explained? Mr. Davis is here to explain those.
Mr. Davis, do you have anything to add?
Council members, the acreage has not changed since the public hearing, nor has the list of projects for the district.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. President, other municipalities, Limestone, Madison, Mr. Davis, how do they benefit from the, the tax revenues from this?
Well, council members, after you vote on this tonight, should you approve it, the next step will be for the Limestone County Commission to do the same at their next regularly scheduled meeting. That will set the district and then we will, over the next several years, start the process of embarking on those capital projects that we've outlined within the district. And then over time, as, as that incurs or induces development, both Limestone County, the city of Huntsville, and Limestone County Schools and Huntsville City Schools will benefit from the increased revenues over time generated from the investment we're about to make in the TIF district.
So, the county commission don't benefit in this tax revenue?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that indirectly. I think many municipalities in the region will benefit from it. Naturally, as we continue to create a job corridor there, those opportunities will have citizens working from all parts of Madison County, Limestone County, Decatur, Athens, city of Huntsville, of course, city of Madison. So, the surrounding metro area will benefit from the job creation that we hope to continue, continues at that, that corridor.
And Dr. showers?
But from a direct tax benefit, no, Madison County would not. It lies in Limestone County.
And Dr. showers, I might point out, this is Limestone County. We're dealing with the Limestone County Commission there. We have had constant conversations with them, with Dr. Sisk, who is head of the Limestone County Schools, with our own school board. We, we sat down with all, well, three of the five members of the school board this past week in a couple of meetings and explained to them what this was doing and what we were looking for out of growth in that area, just so everybody stayed, just so everybody understood where everybody else was coming from and how this was going to affect each different party. The Limestone County Commission has been, has been exemplary in working with us in a partnership. They know that if this area grows, it will make all of Limestone County grow and they will benefit from this growth. So, they are supporting the idea that we're going to put, be able to put this money into infrastructure and use the growth out of that area to pay for that infrastructure.
And council members, I might piggyback on Mayor Battle's comments. Over this process, I personally have received call, my office has received several calls, both with citizens within the corporate limits of Huntsville, in the area of Limestone County, and unincorporated area of Limestone County. And, you know, once I have had the conversation with that citizen, everyone that I have spoken with has been in full support of this, both by the county commission urging them to, to vote on it and our Huntsville City Council.
Thank you. Further questions? Discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution authorizing mayor to submit an application to the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment for grant funding for the Redstone Arsenal Joint Land Use Study.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to ask, does somebody just give us a general explanation of it?
Mr. McGuffey?
Council members, if awarded, these grant funds will be utilized by the city of Huntsville to address compatible land uses between Redstone Arsenal and six surrounding jurisdictions. The planning department will serve as the study sponsor and primary minister of the grant. The grant's total value is $505,295.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to a license agreement between the city of Huntsville and Homegrown LLC.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Ivey?
Yes, sir. This is a license agreement between Hometown, Inc., for a wine tasting event in Big Spring, East. This is the second year that we've did this event.
Questions? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. I is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement between the city of Huntsville and Limestone County Commission to acquire parcels of property outside the corporate limits of the city of Huntsville for the Greenbrier Parkway Phase Three project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Ms. Martin?
Yes, sir. This is an agreement between the city and the Limestone County Commission to acquire right-of-way and easements for construction in areas that are outside of our corporate limits for the Greenbrier Parkway project.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Martin or discussion?
I just find it interesting that we can legally acquire, normally, it's a process of annexation. This is a process where we actually go out and purchase land or?
Right-of-way.
Yes, ma'am. And that's what the agreement is for.
This is just simply right-of-way.
That's correct. It's for the right-of-way or easements for construction of the Greenbrier Parkway project and that's what the agreement allows us to do is jointly acquire those properties with the Limestone County Commission.
And that property then becomes part of Huntsville?
It does not.
It does not. Okay. We simply get the, the right-of-way in that area.
That's correct.
And, and most of Greenbrier Parkway is in the city of Huntsville. There's just small sections which are outside, but this gives us the right to go ahead and move forward with that, that road. One of the agreements with Polari- One of the agreements with Polaris was that we were gonna take the road up to Brown's Ferry so that they would have ingress, egress, and access out of it. But secondly, that's going to be a very important corridor for us to develop all the land that is in that ten or eleven thousand acres that is city of Huntsville property. And by being able to have that corridor there, we will be able to get workers in and out, plus product in and out. And it will be a major, a major collector in that area.
Further discussion on fifteen, aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. N is a resolution authorizing the name of the Samuel Riley Butler Green.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, members of council, as we all know, Butler High School, which was many years ago named after Samuel Riley Butler. And most, most folks do know it as S R Butler. But we thought it important to make sure that we've captured in the ordinance is, in the resolution, his full name. That high school has closed. That high school was, at one point in its history, located on the piece of property that we acquired along Clinton that's adjacent to and really kind of in the middle of what's now known as Campus Eight-O-Five Development, the old Stone Middle School. The mayor has recommended that we essentially move that name to continue to memorialize Mr. Butler's service to our community. He had many, many years of service and critical in the education of children during his time here in the city of Huntsville. And so the mayor felt it was appropriate to continue to memorialize his service to our community. So though the official name would be, using his full name, the resolution also suggests that in common use, it should be referred to as Butler Green.
And one of the things, Mr. President, that we're looking for is not only to memorialize S R Butler, but also to memorialize everybody who went to Butler and who was part of that history. And part of that history is what we're trying to kind of take with this. Let's, let's leave something that will be Butler, and Butler Green is a great thing. This was a former Butler High School at one time before it was moved up on the hill and, and built. So for, from our side, we think that it's a great way to memorialize Butler High School.
And I would, just for clarity for the public and for members of council, at the last council meeting, you approved the contract for the construction of this park. So this is the park that the city acquired some months ago. It's the land the city acquired some months ago there along Clinton Avenue that is kind of the middle part of what we all knew recently as the Stone Middle School campus. Either side of that park is privately owned, as we know, and is in private development. But the city acquired the middle section to establish a park. So this will be a city park maintained by the city. You know, in that, in the construction document, it was referred to as a performance lawn. At that point, it had not been named, but this resolution is intended to give it its official name.
Are we going to inquire elements of the existing Butler facility in some way? Any bricks or benches from Butler or any, is there any?
I've actually, yes, great question. I've actually opened that conversation with Jason Taylor about what, what might be at the existing high school that would be appropriate. Now, obviously, this is an outdoor venue, so we'll have to be cautious about the materials and things. But I believe that there are some of those types of options, and we're in conversation about them.
Mr. President, I've had some contact with members of some of the neighborhood associations in that area, and they love the idea of this because they feel like it's, it brings back some of the neighborhood pride and the heritage that Mayor Battle had mentioned, and it seems like it's a real good fit.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen R was the item that was added to the agenda. It is a resolution, a request authorization to advertise and fill vacant budgeted position of legal secretary two at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. showers. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no legal department items, transactions. We're now at non-roster communications for the public. Mr. Timbalake, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, good afternoon. Ralph Timbalake, twenty-one seventeen, Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight one zero. I rise to entreat the mayor and the city council to entreat the police department to implement some type of policy that will deal with trespass warnings on public property. I E. The reason for this is if an individual is trespass, warned on public property, their rights to due process are jeopardized and denied. And I trust that this council is not about the business of denying citizens their rights to move about without affording them due process. I E. If an individual is trespass on Huntsville Hospital or the city building here or at the library, these are indeed property owned by the public. To deny a citizen access to those properties without due process and just reason is a travesty. And that would also constitute taxation without representation because they are paying taxes on for the maintaining of those entities. I know that warnings in and of themselves are not adversarial, nor are they deleterious. However, they do have the nexus of becoming culpable in a misunderstanding. I E. If one was to not know when they had, this was to expire, they could go on to public property which they would erroneously be thinking was their right and privilege. And they would be find themselves in the crosshairs of having to go to court and cost the city money or property themselves or lose their freedom. This should not be so. That is a much better way to do this, and that is to train our officers not to become unwilling corporates in denying citizens their rights in traversing and the utilization of the services to which you so graciously and wise provided for them. No one public servant who is given the stewardship, the custodian trust should be allowed to misuse that trust in a way that any citizen can be harmed. So I beseech you to do something. Also, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Ms. Reed?
I gotta say something good tonight before I leave. I want to thank you for the signs that went up downtown telling everybody where to go in which directions. I think that's a real good thing. I also want to thank you that Bob Wallace, I can get through there now without fussing. We got that little road sort of well done over there. I attended Madison City Hall Council meeting Monday night for two reasons. One of them's Old Madison Pike, Mayor. I said, you need to partner with Huntsville and find out and tell me what's going on over there. It took me an hour almost to get to Madison. Now, we've been on that way too long. Call Johnny Harris. I told all of them to call him, and I want all of you to call him. Let's get that road open. It's been dragging around way too long. Also, the other reason I was out there of a city manager, I'm back on that again. You know, we had that going on one time here and we stopped that. I really believe, and I think that you should, the police officers and the firefighters has got to combine and get together and take all of you on at once. If it's about salary, they've got to unite in partnership. I call it partnership. And meet, meet halfway and get these boys and girls and whatever. The salaries they need to do their jobs. I believe a three percent cola. And no matter how you look at it, Mayor Spencer gave him one percent. You gave him one percent. You're up at one percent again. You know, that's just like sneezing on me. Don't give, don't waste your time and money on one percent. Think these people, give them a raise. You know how you, you know how you get good jobs done? You thank them, you respect them, you give them money. It takes them money. And some of people get big, big money. Some people never make enough. They wear badges, the firefighters, you could not, we, the people, could not do without the firefighters or the police officers in this city. Imagine. Can you even think of such a thing? I mean, you need, when you go in that budget, we're doing a lot of developing. Oh, we got money for all of that. Anytime you want something, or some of these people want their permits abandoned, we give them anybody anything they want. I'm standing firm on you all. Some of you up for reelection. I hear you campaigning. So start thinking and doing common sense and do the right thing. I, I just think you need to take a new look at this. And we need some new microphones up there if you can afford it sometime. Lay that to rest till you give them a raise, and thank you very much and have a good weekend.
You too. Would anybody else like to address the council? Sir, if you go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Rex Lindsey, two-six-one-seven-eight, Old Highway Twenty in Madison.
Welcome, Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you. I think I can discuss this. It was about the Greenbrier Parkway getting with Limestone County and everything?
Yeah, you have three minutes, as long as it's not personal. Go ahead.
Back, I'm on Old Highway Twenty at Greenbrier, and the city is trying to purchase right-of-way and easement on our property for, I believe, the merge lane for the actual exit on the Greenbrier Expressway onto Old Highway Twenty. And I know, I guess my concern is the communication between the people that are sending out the letters. We were sent a letter on February the eleventh from Kathy Davis and, I mean, I'm sorry, Kathy Martin and Kelly Davis, wanting us to respond to an offer that they offered for our property within two weeks because we had to get this moving. And it took us a week to, for them to ever return our phone calls if we had questions. And I believe some gentleman came from Washington that owns property out there because he couldn't get in touch with them. We sent in a counter offer to the city dated on March the fourth, and we have yet to hear a response on anything from the city as far as that goes. So I know, I know there's six landowners right there. We're all listed on that counter offer, and we haven't heard a word.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Davis, could you get with Mr. Lindsey and discuss this?
I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else wish to address the council? Where's Jarn?